Welcome and thank you for joining us tonight for our city council meeting. We are reconvening into open session with no action taken out of closed. So we will move on to call to order and roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
President.
Councilmember Matina.
Here.
Councilmember Spur.
President.
Councilmember Farlet.
Here.
And Mayor Turner.
Here.
Thank you, Mayor. Moving on to pledge allegiance. Dan, would you please start us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, okay, so we're gonna move back to the next to the next. Moving on to acceptance of the agenda and urgency items. Do we have any urgency items today?
Uh, no.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Consent agenda. These items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. We will take care of them in one motion unless an item is pulled from consent agenda, which could be done either by request of the council member or staff. Is there anyone who... Let's see, we'll read what the consent agenda is. We have waived reading except by title of any ordinances under consideration at this meeting. Approve minutes of the city council regular meeting of August 21st, 2018. Approve the warrant register of August 31st, 2018. Review and file fiscal year 2017-18 civil grand jury report response and adopt the proposed amendment to the abandoned vehicle abatement service authority joint exercise of powers agreement to add a fifth voting member selected at large by the service authority. Does council request any of these items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any member of the public who would care to address any of these items? None will take it back to the council?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next is citizens input. Anyone may approach the council to speak for three minutes on an item that's under the authority or the jurisdiction of the council but is not already placed on today's agenda. We have one request so far, and so I know who they are because they filled out one of these citizens input forms.
Which is not required.
Oh, we have a bunch! Alright. Alright, so I'll remember to get the mic because yours is not on the floor. Actually, let's go ahead and start with Michael Green today since I will forget you then. Thank you.
Thank you. All council members, I gave a letter to the city today in which I'm writing to formally request discussion or public hearing in a future city council meeting regarding how public records should be handled for cannabis business applications. I'm making this request both as a private citizen and as a member of the planning commission which is tasked with reviewing use permit applications under the city's new commercial cannabis ordinance. The genesis of the request was on August 15th, public hearing for the planning commission where myself and other commissioners present were given excerpts of the operational plan instead of the full application as it was submitted by the applicant including facility and security plans. When I asked the applicant, a local resident named Kimberly Chilket, if she had any objection to seeing those operational plans, she said no. She was more than glad to share all that information in her application as she submitted it, which is a great attitude. It's a great attitude to have. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, so the very next day I filed a request to see the full application package under the California Public Records Act. Twelve days later, I received a formal response letter and some but not all of the application materials that were withheld from the planning commission during the public hearing. The response letter claimed the site maps and security plans were exempt from disclosure, which may or may not be correct interpretation of the Public Records Act. But even assuming that interpretation is legally correct, the city is not required to withhold a potentially exempt information. The exemption is fully discretionary. And I'd like the city to discuss and address whether that discretion needs to be applied when somebody says absolutely my application is an open book, you should be able to talk about it. So Ms. Chilket had no expectation of privacy. I'm very pleased to report she was very honest in forthcoming in her application. You should encourage other applicants to do that. So one part of my request is to ask the council to set a future agenda item to discuss whether in Ms. Chilket's application the city should exercise its discretion if indeed has any to withhold that evidence portion. My second request is that the council hold a broader discussion on public records handling, not just for cannabis but other types of meetings, which were not really discussed much during the development of the commercial cannabis ordinance. Section 5.3, 4.04 OD basically requires city staff to treat cannabis applications as constitutional except where disclosure is required by law. And it got a little awkward on August 15th. There may be some good reasons for adopting such an approach, but I would submit there are many more good reasons not to do so, and I would ask the council to talk it over. And that's probably over three minutes, but I think you get the gist of my request.
Thank you.
As long as I'm up here, the Brown Act doesn't require speakers to fill out forms. It's just for the...
Right. Now it makes it just easier for the old...
I know, it makes it easier for the older.
Thanks. Next, we have Kim Beal speaking about tourism and accommodations.
I'm here to talk to you about the money and time and effort that's being spent on tourism in Lakeport to attract new people, these different types of events, and I think a lot of work's been done in that area. But I was appalled to find out the level of the accommodations here in Lakeport for those people who come into Lakeport for either events, weddings, whatever. I had a friend that was disabled whose apartment got flooded, and they were sent to the anchorage to stay while they redid her apartment. While there, after about two weeks, she called me saying there's something wrong, they're covered with bites and they itch. Bedbugs were found there along with German cockroaches and something called foot flies. And I think it's appalling that these places are allowed to operate with absolutely nobody going in and investigating the conditions of these places. I called state numbers, I called city numbers, nobody could go in and evaluate these areas. And I think if they're gonna be allowed to operate in Lakeport and have their names on all this tourist information, then the city should take some kind of steps to review how they're operating and the conditions of those rooms. They should have to have pest control, and they should show that there's proof that those issues were dealt with. I found stuff dating all the way back to 2013 regarding the bedbugs in both the anchorage and the place next door that they also own. So now you're aware of what people are bringing back to their homes when they leave here, and I think it's heinous. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Suzanne Lyons speaking about the walking path sign.
Suzanne Lyons. We finally got our sign for the walking path, the big signs, and we thought we'd do show and tell and bring it in and show you guys. It's really pretty. No, that's not it. That's the back, and that peels off.
Okay, so there it is.
It looks really good. I think the size is really nice, and it will be up... Oh, good, yes, show it to the galley. It would be really nice to get it up. One of the things that we would like to do is get the benches up. We have the money for... We have a bench that's sitting at my house anytime... It's been there a couple months. Anytime that they want to set it up, it's a donation. We've also had a donation of the cost of one of the pads, and there is enough money left in the budget to do the other two benches. So I'd love to see them in because if we get this up and people walk that two miles and there's no bench, I would be upset, okay? You might get phone calls. So anyway, that's what it looks like, and I think it's lovely, and we'll give it to Doug.
Where's it gonna go, Suzanne?
This one's going down in Library Park. So this will be at the very beginning, showing people how to start the walk, and then we do have the small signs that are in businesses. So the medallions are all set in the sidewalk, but it would be nice to have the benches. These purple marks actually show you where there are benches, so it would be nice to have the benches.
Perspective.
Yeah, and also there are... You can't see it from there, but it does show some of the landmark buildings, so it gives people a kind of an idea of where they are. But I've seen everywhere we go that people have walking paths, and it seems to be a really big thing, so we're a really walkable town. It would be wonderful. And when we stop and think about some of the street closures that we do for events, it would be really nice to have this so people can go, oh, guess what? I can walk from this place to this place. I don't need to drive.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you Suzanne for all your hard work.
Thank you. Next, we have David Velazquez, a request for a second site for street banners in addition to the Super Reese sites.
Hi, I'm David Velazquez. I'm currently president of the Lake County Symphony Association, and we had a concert scheduled on August 19th, which we had postponed because of the fires, the wildfires. The new date is September 30th at Super Reese. It's a special concert. It's a burrow concert. We always try and get our request in early to the city to get the banner up. We had a request in, we had it all set up. Of course, the postponement now, we find out that the current banner slot is taken, and that's happened before. But what I'm suggesting is that there is a second site designated for street banners for events. And I know it's been done in the past, at least my understanding is, there has been another site some time ago. I think it was more closer to 11th Street, but it seems like the city should be able to handle more than one banner at a time. And the good news is that there's more than one event, a lot of weekends going on, and so I think it's good news for the city. And the more we can do to promote these events, the better. So if I can get some quick action on this, it would be great because I'm working on... I just got back from being out of the country, and now I'm working on trying to get that banner set up for the new concert. It'd be nice to have a place to put it. Right now, we're in queue for putting it on the normal site, but it's gonna be two weeks, three weeks before the current concert, and that's really not very effective. So we'd really like to have a second site where we could put that banner up a week before the concert to advertise it to folks. So that's my request. And I encourage you all to come to the concert, by the way. It's gonna be great. It's a burrow concert with all the telegraph and box.
The chambers actually the ones that do the banners, not the city, so that's...
But the city puts it up.
We put it up for them, yeah.
Right.
But it's actually that they're revolving. And the other place that we used to put them, we're not allowed anymore because it belongs to utility company, the Poles. So we can discuss looking for other site, but in the meantime, you might wanna maybe ask, I know it's not as visible as across over the top of the street, but you might wanna ask the senior Millsville Center...
The thread store.
Thread store, that wall there's pretty visible, and maybe you could... They'd let you hang it up there in the meantime.
Okay, we'll think about that.
That's a good backup.
Right, but ideally, it'd be nice to find another spot just for that reason because there are a lot of times that there are conflict, so...
Yeah, we've had that issue trying to find another spot, just to let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wanted to have some citizens input before we move on? Our next one, we are introducing new employees, Chris Perkins and Jonathan Olin.
We got one of each?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, council, I would like to introduce our new public works worker, Chris Perkins. Chris is filling a void that we've had for a while, and he's been a really good asset to our little group down there at the Corporation Yard, so you can put a face with a name. This is Chris, and we just welcome him aboard.
Chris.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
And madam mayor, members of the council, I'd like to introduce Jonathan Olin, a utility operator. He's joined our team about two and a half weeks ago, and his background is in security in the Geiser area, and actually was looking for a career change and attended all the classes at Woodland Community College and actually became certified, and so he joined our team, and we're happy to have him.
Thank you.
Jonathan, how are you doing here?
Thank you. Welcome, Jonathan Olin. Next item is very long in coming and very much appreciated. We're gonna present a proclamation in honor of Gerald "Jerry" Mills, longtime member of the Lakeport Fire Protection District Board of Directors on his retirement to the board. Jerry, if you'd join me down here, please?
Proclamation of the city council of the city of Lakeport. Whereas Gerald "Jerry" Mills dedicated 20 years to the Lakeport Fire Protection District as a member of the district's Board of Directors since 1998. And whereas Jerry Mills began his career in public service in the California Highway Patrol, ultimately serving as captain commander in the Clear Lake Area Office and subsequently the Eureka Office, ultimately retiring after 31 years of service and returning to Lakeport, whereupon he was appointed as a fire commissioner to the Lakeport County Fire Protection District. And whereas Jerry Mills has made numerous contributions to the Lakeport County Fire Protection District as a commissioner and as of the 2002 annexation of the Lakeport Fire Department as a director on the board of the Lakeport Fire Protection District. And whereas Jerry Mills' tenure on the board saw the consolidation of the district formation including annexation to form the district, the district's assumption of responsibility for ambulance services in the district when the previously contracted private ambulance company ceased serving Lake County, the appointment of two fire chiefs, Chief Wells and Chief Hutchison. And whereas Jerry Mills has served his community as a past member of Rotary International and a current member of the Elks Club, as well as serving on the Board of Directors of Lake Laffco. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lakeport does hereby recognize and thank Jerry Mills for his dedication to the Lakeport Fire Protection District and the citizens of the city of Lakeport, and wishes him well in his retirement from the Board of Directors of the district.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I'm mayor, members of council, thank you very much. It's been very nice working with the city over these years. It's always been positive input, and there's been members of your commission or committee at most of our meetings, and we really appreciate that input. And you know that you've served, you've rented us the building for like two or three bucks a year. It's the fire department headquarters, so that's a big quality for us when we need money nowadays. You know, working in Iowa, we didn't really make a lot of friends because people don't like getting arrested and told what to do or booked in a county jail, so it was a distinct honor and pleasure for me to work in the fire department where these guys come to work. Every day, their main job, their only job, is to do good things for the community, and they do that every day. These are a great bunch of firemen and directors. It's been a distinct honor for me to be a part of that organization for 20 years, so thank you all. Oh, one other thing I'd like to say is Karen Mackey appointed me, but through the input of Ray Benavides who vacated that spot on the... It was commissioners at that time. So Ray vacated that spot, talked me into becoming a director. Thank you, Ray.
I'm sorry.
We also have five members of the directors here tonight, three guys here, sitting in the back row. They always try to be non-committal. They don't want to be out in the front row, but they do a lot of good things, those guys right there. So thank you all. The chief we have now is probably the most professional one that we've had, and he's a real positive thing for this department and for this community. So thank you all. It was really a great thing for you to give me this proclamation. Thank you all.
Thank you. Yes, our next item is to present a proclamation of gratitude to the Lakeport Fire Protection District for their service during the recent wildfires. We'd like to start with just a brief synopsis of our recent experience. Put on back there.
Kevin put together this time lapse showing the first day of the fire to how quickly it grew through the fire period.
That was a day by day. And then the little red dot in the middle, that's Lakeport.
Yes.
If we could invite all of our fire personnel to come and join us right around in here.
I wanna see all your wonderful faces. I wanna make a picture here so we can see you guys.
A lot of staff to protect the city.
This is only half.
This is only half? Wow.
A proclamation of the city council of the city of Lakeport. Whereas the Lakeport Fire Department was formed in 1894 to provide fire protection to the city of Lakeport and subsequently merged with Lakeport County Fire Protection District to form the current Lakeport Fire Protection District. And whereas the mission of the Lakeport Fire Protection District is to be a leader in emergency services delivery by providing fire prevention and educational outreach and all hazards response, including fire suppression, advanced life support, emergency medical services, emergency and non-emergency ambulance transports, hazardous materials response, and technical rescue. And whereas on July 27th, 2018, the Mendocino Fire Complex made up of the river and ranch fires broke out, ultimately resulting in mass evacuations throughout the county of Lake, including the city of Lakeport. And whereas the Lakeport Fire Protection District staff of professionals and volunteers were called upon to stay to fight the river fire while their own families were evacuated and their homes unprotected. And whereas the district provided updates and daily briefings to disseminate accurate and timely information to city officials despite other calls on the district's time and resources. And whereas the firefighters of the district battled tirelessly in the field to hold the river fire west of Highway 29, ultimately preventing any loss of homes or businesses in the city limits. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Lakeport does hereby recognize and thank the Lakeport Fire Protection District for their unwavering courage and professionalism in the face of a deadly threat to both the city and county residents.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, on behalf of the Board of Directors, myself, and the members of the fire district, thank you for this. I said it before, I couldn't be more proud of the folks that we have and how they responded to this incident. I think it was of a magnitude that we haven't really seen here before, and everybody stepped up to a level that we really couldn't even imagine that we were able to do. This is just a small number of the people that were there. We had 31 of our 37 staff out 24/7 for quite some time, and everybody just pitched in, did what had to be done, didn't need a lot of leadership, because everybody just did their job. So we really appreciate that, and I'm very proud of these folks. Thank you.
Thank you. So we had a request to move the next agenda item to next week, our next council meeting? Okay. We have a little technical difficulty. So we're moving the update on the hospital and its response to wildfires to our next agenda. Thank you, Dan. So the next item we'll cover tonight is adopt a proposed resolution adopting a grievance procedure under the American Disabilities Act, notice under the act, and designate the administrative services director as the ADA coordinator.
Come up here a second, let me see all of you. Good evening, madam mayor, members of the council. Under the American with Disabilities Act, agencies that have more than 50 employees are required to do a few things. And since we have not been over 20 employees, we still are actually, we haven't fully adopted all of these procedures, but since we're so close, we would like to consider that this evening. The first would be to adopt and distribute a public notice about relevant provisions of the ADA to all persons who may be interested in its programs, activities, and services. The next is to develop a grievance procedure to provide fair and prompt resolution of complaints under Title II of the ADA at the local level. And then the third thing is to designate at least one employee responsible for coordinating compliance with the ADA and investigating ADA complaints. And staff is recommending myself as the administrative services director of that position. So the resolution sets forth these procedures, sets forth a grievance policy, and also gets a simple indemnus. That's it?
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Any member of the public here to speak on this item?
Madam Mayor, there's nothing further. I'll make a motion to adopt the proposed resolution adopting a grievance procedure under the American Disabilities Act, notice under the act, and designate the administrative services director as the ADA coordinator.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our next is to authorize the city manager to sign the associated purchase order and purchase agreement for a John Deere 210L skip loader.
Madam Mayor, council members, before you is a request from the Public Works Department to purchase a John Deere 210L loader. As part of that package also comes what they call a gannon box. Basically, it's a blade on the back of the tractor as well. This is replacing our 1987 Case Backhoe, which has been a very faithful servant, but is getting tired like some of the rest of us. So part of the problem that we're facing also in public works and in other... So, part of the problem that we're facing also in Public Works and another reason that we're moving forward with some of these purchases is the state of California passed a law called CARB. The CARB law states that any diesel engine has to meet certain criteria, and there is a timeline for that. If we use some of our equipment less than 100 hours, we're looking between 2020 and 2024 to phase all of our equipment out that does not meet the tier requirements. So this is doing a double-fold thing. It's replacing some worn-out equipment, but it's also bringing us into CARB compliance. And so, if there's any questions, I'd be more than glad to answer them.
Doug, it seems to me that the last couple of years, I've noticed that you've been taking this very old reliable equipment and suddenly, out of nowhere, just wanting to retire it and buy new stuff. Is this getting to be a habit?
Hopefully a good habit. And I think that you can see in a lot of the projects that we do around town now, we're actually getting more done by being able to update some equipment to being more user-friendly in particular. Some of the older equipment is not quite as user-friendly as the new stuff, so.
Have you got a buyer for the older reliable?
Unfortunately, due to CARB laws, you cannot sell that in the state of California.
What about Arkansas?
Arkansas is doable.
I just want to make a quick correction to the fiscal impact. We have, that's all in our general fund, and thank you too, Councilwoman Store that caught that. It's actually over three funds. It's the general fund, which is for the roads, and sewer, because they'll be using it a lot, and a lot of funds, so it's split between the three.
Any further questions from the council?
Do we get a pre-race?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, if there's nothing further.
Anybody from the public want to talk about our John Deere 210L skip loader? Okay, bring it back to council.
Madam Mayor, I'm moved to authorize the City Manager to sign the associated purchase order and the purchase agreement for a John Deere 210L skip loader.
Second. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item. Adopt a resolution supporting opposition to Proposition 6, which is titled the Repeal of the Road Repair and Accountability Act, which will appear on the November 6, 2018 ballot.
Madam Mayor, if you so please, you are part of the State Transportation Committee under the LEAP policy. If you'd like to take this item, you're an author of the ZERO, she would like me to, that's fine.
Sure, I can say a few words about it. As we go to the League of California Cities Legislative Policy Committee meetings for the last few years, it's been ongoing discussion regarding how roads are not getting fixed anymore because there's just so little money. And as they explained to us in the 80s, when they passed the gas tax at the 18 cent per gallon tax, there was no CPI added to that measure at that time. So all through time, as inflation has increased, as expenses have gone up, a number of other things have impacted it, we get to recently, when the 18 cents is now at about a nine cent value. It's more expensive to repair our roads. We also have higher technology in our vehicles, which makes us buy less gas, so that nine cents is actually less of the nine cents than it would have been before. More recently, with our fuel efficient and our electronic or alternative fuel vehicles, these vehicles are heavier than the normal car, and so the impacts to our roads are increased. However, the revenue coming from any gas tax has significantly decreased. All of those go into the mix, turned into the cry for help, that finally gained the political will at the state to pass SB 1, which resulted in billions of dollars now being dedicated to our roads to fix them. Among which, Lakeport and Lake County and the City of Clearlake, all three jurisdictions have seen revenue already, because the state was very quick to start rolling out these SB 1 funds as soon as they were able to. We have fixed the ADA access on Third Street with the addition of a little bit of pavement. We also are able to fast-track our Safe Routes to School project, and I think we have a roundabout, there are a number of road projects in Lakeport that are now going to be done earlier than they would have been able to be done without this funding. The voters at the last election approved Prop 69, which is a proposition that locks in those SB 1 funds so that they can be used only for fixing our roads. The state legislature, the other powers that be, the state jurisdictions can't go, oh, let's just borrow some of that funding now because we're in a tight squeeze. The voters saw that that would now be dedicated only to fixing our roads. And so we have this significant amount of funding that's starting to roll out to cities and counties. I think overall, Lakeport may be expecting $45 million over a period of 10 years. Oh, all of Lake County, sorry. So that includes City of Clearlake as well as county jurisdictions, I know, huh? Anyway, we're still getting more than we would have before. And so, I'm guessing there's a lot of misunderstanding about the purpose of SB 1 funds, and as is so common and popular right now, there's a huge resentment and a distrust of government jurisdictions about actually using the funds for what the voters say they're going to use them for. And I'm guessing that that's a lot of the momentum, aside from all the partisan politics stuff, I'm guessing that that's a lot of the momentum in the public to actually have had enough signatures than to get this new Prop 6 on the ballot. So I'm asking that the council just take this into consideration. The no on Prop 6 is sponsored by or supported by the League of California Cities, and I'm hoping that we'll have a good discussion regarding keeping these funds coming to help benefit our roads. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, I'd just like to comment that Stacy and I are on the APC, and we work closely with Caltrans and a number of other agencies, and have all these different projects that are planned out 20, 30 years, 40 years out. And the fact that every day, and Doug knows this better than anybody, every single deferred maintenance program that we have, any project that we do goes up astronomically day by day. And when we finally got this, there's people out there like Phil Dow from Dow and Associates, he couldn't believe that we finally got this after battling, I think since 1994, it's been stagnant, the money that we were getting because of the decreased amount of fuel that people use, the increased efficiency of vehicles, the weight of all these vehicles. This was a much-needed thing, and we all thought that we were free and clear and finally landed the money that we desperately needed to do the deferred maintenance, which is in the billions, if not trillions of dollars that needs to be done, not to mention the other things. And as Doug said before, a lot of times, I think it costs eight times more to do an old road as a new road, and so the other ones just get worse and worse and worse, and we finally got this infusion in some confused individuals, as Maria mentioned, that don't fully understand it and don't realize all the safeguards that were put into this very well-constructed SB 1 that battled against, I think, another one that was put up by the other group, and this one persevered and won, and now we're battling to keep it, which to me is so ludicrous when you realize that every one of us is paying something like $761 a year, give or take a few change, due to damage done to our car, to the roads. It's just, to me, it's unbelievable that anybody would challenge this with no other alternative for funding. This is something that we've so needed for so many years, and the fact that anybody is challenging this is just due to blatant ignorance, in my opinion, because they have no alternative, and it's only going to get worse, and it's only getting more expensive, and we're going to get less and less and less done if anything like this ever passes and we lose SB 1. So this is a horrific attack on a really good program. And that's my two cents.
Does the council have any questions before we open it up to public input? Is there any member of the public who would like to address this item today?
I do have a question, I think. It's brought up in here that the new fuel-efficient cars are heavier, and they're, you know, buying less fuel, they use the roads as much. Has anybody been looking into a way to recoup some of those funds from the people who are choosing to drive those vehicles instead of the standard gasoline-powered cars?
They did look at doing toll roads.
Toll roads.
They also looked at a user's speed. Yeah, in fact, there was a year-long survey where a number of cars participated, but I haven't heard the results back from that yet, so they're looking, and there is an additional assessment, I think, on those newer vehicles.
Yeah, because I mean, what happens when eventually, we're all driving electric cars, because, you know, you can't afford to pay the $2 a gallon tax on gas to keep the roads maintained. And I'm not saying this is a bad bill at all, you know, I'm not saying that, but is it feasible to rely on a gas tax long-term when more and more people are just going to go to vehicles where they can't, where they don't have to buy as much gas, and then your roads are getting tore up even more? So where's the solution there, long-term? Long-term? Uber, Lyft? Yeah, I'm, so, I mean, I'm all for the money you get.
I still see a lot of cars from the 80s out on the road today, so I think that's very long-term, that we'll all have those electric vehicles, but yeah, I agree.
Well, I mean, even just the hybrid cars that are coming out, every car that's, I'm seeing trucks coming out now that are getting, what, 30, 40 miles a gallon? Which is incredible compared to my stupid little pickup truck that drinks gas, but I was just wondering if anybody knew, anybody looking in that direction, of what do we do after we've taxed the gas all we can tax?
One thing that my insurance company does, and this is just a thought, is they make me fill out how many miles I'm driving on each car for things, so that they know how to give me my insurance. So that maybe somebody getting that information and billing somebody for driving next amount of miles on the road, I don't know. Back to your thing.
Maybe that would be better than just the general gas tax. Do away with a gas tax and do a mileage tax.
That's something for other than us.
It's above our pay, I understand that.
In the meantime, let's bring it back to the Proposition 6 item, yeah.
Madam Mayor, I can speak real quickly, just in regards to, you know, I agree with you, I think there is a lot of angst in that accountability factor, and as Doug and I can attest to, the process and procedures that are there in place with this SB 1 funding are quite different than any other before. I think we've already brought to your body twice. We have an annual reporting requirement, we have to very specifically lay out what we are using that SB 1 funding for. That is transmitted to the state, and they actually have a very nice website, very transparent, easy to use, where you can take a look at any jurisdiction, how much money they're getting, what they're going to be using that project on, so, you know, anybody who does have some concerns, I'd encourage them to take a look at that, and just a quick Google search of SB 1, we'll pull it right up, and so.
That's great. Thank you. There's nothing further from council, waiting for motion.
We already did public, didn't we?
Yes. Anybody else?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution supporting opposition to Proposition 6, repeal of the Road Repair and Accountability Act, which will appear on the November 6, 2018 ballot.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is to direct the City of Lakeport's voting delegate to the League of California Cities Annual Conference to support the two resolutions provided in the Annual Conference Resolutions Packet.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, next week, on September 14th, there will be a general meeting with all the delegates at the League from the different cities, and there's two resolutions this year that will be at the meeting, and you have appointed Mayor Turner yourself as the delegate, and a alternate, first alternate was Mayor Protem Barnes, and Councilwoman Parletts the second alternate voting members. So, at the meeting on Friday, the two resolutions that are up for discussion and vote is a resolution, the League of California Cities calling upon the League to respond to the increasing vulnerabilities to local municipal authority, control and revenue, and explore the preparation of a ballot measure and/or constitutional amendment that would further strengthen local democracy and authority. Basically, to keep our authority here locally instead of from the state. And the proposed resolution directs the League conferences to assess the increasing vulnerabilities of local authority and control and revenue. And then possibly do a future ballot measure or constitutional amendment for voters for this same issue. And the second resolution of the League of California Cities is declaring its commitment to support the repeal of preemption in California Food and Agricultural Code 11501.1 that prevents local governments from regulating pesticides. So the resolution seeks to have the state and the League study the negative impacts and anti-coagulant, and rodenticides. Okay, can I say those terms together? And address the inability of cities to regulate the use of the rodenticides and the pesticides. So, those are basically the two resolutions, and for your discussion.
Any questions from council? Is there any member of the public who'd care to address these? No, bring it back to council.
Question, the second, maybe I'm just not understanding. Resolution of the League of Cities declaring its commitment to support the repeal of preemption in California Food and Agricultural Code that prevent, okay, so, basically, they're both going for more local control. I'm confused on that second one, I thought we were giving away some local control, don't these conflict? Okay, sorry, thank you, misunderstanding going forward.
If there's no further discussion, ready for motion.
Madam Mayor, I'm moved to direct the City of Lakeport's voting delegates to the League of California Cities Annual Conference to support the two resolutions provided in the Annual Conference Resolution Packet.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will move on then to City Council Communications, Margaret.
I don't know further comments?
David?
Nothing to report.
Doug?
The only thing I'd like to bring council's attention is we are starting back up with our pavement preservation projects this evening, and so 11th Street and South Main Street, we're going to get their second code, so hopefully we can get that done in the next two days, and hopefully within two weeks or so, we'll have it striped, and we'll have that put behind us and moving on to many other projects.
That's it? Thank you. Nick?
Nothing to report.
Paul?
Nothing to report.
Chief?
Yes, one thing, today was a difficult day for the police department, and I just wanted to publicly state that today is the anniversary of the death of J.R. Mindigoren, who was a 15-year-old autistic boy that drowned off of Library Park on September 4, 2015. And I just wanted to publicly state that our thoughts and prayers remain with his family, and I also wanted to thank his parents for bringing food to the police officers today at the department, so, thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
Nothing to report.
No report. Councilmember Spur?
Basically, the question is this weekend, on Saturday, if anybody wants to see the sea plane, so, that's a nice thing to go do. That's it.
Councilmember Parletts?
No report.
Councilwoman Medina?
I am looking forward to National Night Out, is that Monday?
September 17.
Oh, the 17th.
Monday, the 17th, two weeks.
Two weeks. During the fire, we had a really great view in our driveway, and a ton of my neighbors were hanging out, we were all hanging out together, and it made me think of like block party or National Night Out, so I'm hoping all my neighbors come down and we can hang out. So that would, that'll be great. And then the school board meeting is Thursday night at 6:00, and they are going to be reviewing the bond projects. and they are going to be reviewing the bond projects, they can give you an update, so that'll be a good meeting. And I think, Elizabeth, are you going to stream that on Facebook?
I wasn't planning to, I was planning to record it, though.
You're going to record it? Okay, so it'll be available one way or the other. That's it. Oh, next week is LEED California Cities Conference, so I'm looking forward to the classes there, too.
Mayor Protem?
No report.
I will just close. I'm going to join staff at the Ukiah City Council meeting tomorrow to thank them for the mutual aid that they supplied during the fire event. And then Thursday is the Mendocino College Welcome Back to School barbecue from 4:00 to 6:00. I hope everybody will join me there for a hot dog. With that, we'll go ahead and close. Thank you.